Just that kind of stuff.
I don't too.
She knows all the interns.
Yeah, well, they're up to you. They already got one interest taken out. They're up to the road and then the parking lot.
I'll call the meeting to order for June fourth, two thousand twenty-five, the Grayville Town Council. To welcome our visitors with us this evening. And the approval of the minutes for May twenty-first. Make a motion to accept the minutes. Approved, yes.
Roll call vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Wilmer?
Aye.
Claude?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yep. Okay, thanks. Casey, DLZ, what do you have for us?
All right, so there's a packet, an agenda there that everybody has. One of yours is set off to the right.
Yeah.
So several updates, discussion items, and a few action items here for council to consider. So the first three pages are the agenda items, and then there's some exhibits I'll reference as we go through this. So the action items, updates are in red. So first off, on the Water Works project, we have, if you remember, there's two projects there, Project A and Project B, on the water distribution, water plant, the vacation of the lagoon. We've sent, submitted all those documents to IDN, we followed up with them, so we're hoping that approval is pending here soon. With that, there's two action items here to consider. One update, I've got an extra U in that spelling, but one of the items is part of the lagoon testing. You approved this, I think it was in November or December, Dan said, roughly thirty-eight hundred dollars for Fleming to do the lagoon sampling. After we worked with IDN, we had to get some additional sampling, so their total cost, instead of thirty-eight hundred, it was actually a little over eighty-three hundred, as you can see. That's all part of Fleming's contract, though, so that was just a note that we wanted to let you know. You approved it before, after we worked with IDN, that cost did go up. With that being said, if you look at Action Item One, A two, what you have here is Change Order Five and Final. And basically what this does is close out that project and close out the Fleming contract. With this one, there is an adder of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred ninety-three, and that's associated with that tet, so it captures that eighty-three hundred, but then all the additional soils and stuff we had to do there at the lagoon. Because, you know, we made an assumption of what we had to remove, but it was paid by quantity. If you go back to Sheet Number Four, you can see there, this is Change Order Five and Final. So with this, when you would be increasing the cost by twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-three cents, taking your total cost of that as a little less than two point two million. With that, the other thing we've done is balanced all the quantities out in terms of the adders and the deductions. So that would be the first action items, that basically closes it out. And then the only other item would be Pay Application Nineteen and Final. And with this one, you would pay them for the lagoon work, but then you would also pay any of the remaining retainage. You've paid some of the retainage, but with this pro- Pay Application, you would pay everything. If you go back to Sheet Number, probably the best one to go to is Sheet Number Seven. I've got the full packets here, but Sheet Number Seven shows the total amount there. You can see D is the total amount, retainage is zero, and then the balance due is forty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. So with that, we would send the change order to SRF, and then Pay Application Nineteen would be a dispersment request, but Stephanie would send to SRF. So that's, that was, those are two action items we'd ask you to consider, and then we would work to close the paperwork out. I guess real quick, on the water tower, we're just pending a final change order. We're waiting for some additional information from the contractor to close that out. And then we've also talked to Brian, we're, we're gonna ask Dixon. Dixon did, helped us prepare the specs, and then they also did the inspection, that's kind of what they did. And we're gonna ask him for a kind of a final report on that, correct?
Yeah, I gotta, yeah, I need something from Brian, they wanted a final report.
So we're still, we still have to get that, there'll probably be some costs associated with that, but that would help close that project out. And then with that, right now, you know, you can see there, when you did the SRF project, we always have to put in contingency funds, so you can see down there at the bottom, under General, there's roughly, after these pay applications, and where we suspect the water tower will be, will have roughly two hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars. So that can be used on additional projects. It has to follow the SRF requirement, or it can be used on additional equipment. So that's something that I think here, as we go into the next few months, we can start identifying some ways to use those funds.
Like projects, could be the trees down State Street.
No, 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 so the projects, the, the, I'm sorry, that's, that's a good question. The projects have to be items related to the water utility.
Yeah.
So it could be equipment that helps in the operations and maintenance, like a valve exerciser. It could maybe be extra hydrants, or it could be projects. The thing with projects, we always tell everybody, you probably want the projects big enough, because you don't want a small project for ten thousand dollars for somebody having to do all the SRF requirements. So once we go through this, I know there's some, maybe some small things at the water tower, I think we gotta do some check valves and stuff. So what we would do is, we would work on our list, we would work with Ryan and Eric, and come up with some recommendations for council to consider for those funds.
Now, can we use some of them funds, because I think we have to loop that out there on.
Yeah, so, and that's the other thing, I know that was farther down the list, I just, Jeff's talked to me, and I talk to Eric quite a bit. We're looking into that issue in terms of how we could help some of the pressures out there. There's, there's, there's various ways we could do that. A loop is one option, another one is a small booster station, and then another one is working with Fort Wayne and see if we can have some telemetry to, to help that. I don't think we'd get the whole way, it may be a combination of those, but the answer to, to your question is yes, we can use those funds to facilitate something out there to help not only the immediate needs, but some of the future need as well. And again, that's all in the TIF as well. Maybe something Zach, I would ask Zach and Stephanie, look into, see how much funds we have in that TIF, because that may be, you know, would help as well.
Well, we have about a hundred and two thousand in rainy day fund type thing, too, we can use that for anything. So that's, you know, something to consider, too.
I know that's, that's, that's not, so I think condition, yes, that's, we're looking at that, some options. Anything we do out there, this can be used for that, or it can be used for other stuff. And then you guys, we've already done the majority of the work for the AMP and Baker Tillys, and you, eventually you may have endorsements where you have to adopt the asset management plan, but that's a pretty straightforward item, we'll, we'll have to reach out to Ross to see what he's had on that. So with that, we'd ask council to consider those two motions to approve Change Order Five and Final, and then also Pay Application Nineteen and Final.
You good, Wilmer? You good on that?
Yeah, yep.
I'll make a motion then that we accept Change Order Five and Final for the twenty-one, or the two mil.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Roll call vote, Jeff?
Aye.
Wilmer?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I would also make a motion then that we pay, Pay App Number Nineteen and the Final for the forty-one thousand, seven forty-seven, sixty-five.
One second, Dan.
Roll call vote, Jeff?
Aye.
Wilmer?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Let me just give those to you after the meeting, sign, I wouldn't keep them on, okay. On the trail, no action items there, of course, the work's being done by Fleming, all the constructions being coordinated by the county highway. We're current on some mittles, of course, we're touched, we're trying to touch base with the county on that, at least on a regular basis. I know there's been some items that's been brought up, either by the council or Stephanie, we look into. Basically, as everybody knows, a lot of the pavement's done, of course, in the park, they moved it there pretty quick. Now they're moving on to, you know, the main street area. So as a reminder, the substantial completion there is in early August, so there's a little bit of a buffer there from some of the other stuff that's happening this fall.
Okay, do you have a question, the trail, or the, removing of the fire hydrants in the trail?
To relocate those?
Yeah.
Just that one.
I think there's one, is there one that we need to do?
I don't know, I, I was originally, well, we originally said those two, they may have moved back to one.
I have to check, I can't, I go by memory.
There originally had three, the one on Grayville Road and the one by the church. They're trying to angle a little bit to put the one on State Street a little behind that, and a little behind that one, so those two are not moving. The only one they gotta move is the one by the red house that's got its own valve and everything, it's gotta move back.
I guess, so, so on that, I mean, are you communicating that to Mark and then?
Yeah, they're.
Okay, so I, I'm sure he'll, they'll implement that, and then, they're, those are all pay items, so as long as you get that information to Mark and.
All it was to pay for moving to the hydrant, but they weren't supposed to be moved, that's what I was asking, so, and now we're down to one, so never mind.
They don't, they didn't need to move, they already had it figured out to go around.
Okay.
Let me hide them, so, and they're good fire hydrants, too, so there's no reason to mess them up.
Anything else on the, the trail?
Yeah, real quick, do, do you know, Wilmer, or maybe Zach, you or Casey may even know, if we have a statute that we need to use if we create and when we create signage for golf carts on those trails? Do we need to have the, kind of like we had outside of town, I don't know if that goes into county versus us, to be able to say, you know, the no golf carts, motorized vehicles, buggies?
That's a good topic, because in the signage and what vehicles are allowed, what aren't the maintenance of the trail.
Does it have to be, does it have to be a statute to be enforceable for our police?
Well, you, you wanna, I don't know what the agreement is with the county on who's, if they maintain all this.
I think they'll probably, and that's, we can follow up on that, but I think they'll defer the maintenance to the town within corporate limits. Of course, they're putting the signage up, but I think probably what the town would consider is the, the use of the trail. You'd probably want that to match everybody else in terms of what's allowed and not allowed. So is that something new, see if I can dig that up, and then we can start from there.
You see that kind of government?
Yeah.
Because if we have to get all that, now's the time to establish.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so the other projects that, or most of these are pending. So on the ARPA sanitary projects, the Grayville Road, if you recall, there's four projects there, the Grayville Sewer Extension, that's a gravity extension out here east of town, API, they've done some miscellaneous tree clearing. Other than that, we're looking at having a pre-con meeting probably later this summer, but they probably won't start that until fall. They have to be done by spring, just so remember, we opened that up, you know, we don't have to have it done until the end of twenty twenty-seven. Right now, I suspect they probably won't start until late summer or early fall. The Page Road Sewer Extension, that's the Forest Main there, south on Page Road, that's by underground contractors. We still need to schedule a meeting, we, they're getting all, that's all their paperwork and mittles. At this time, we still don't have a firm date on when they're gonna start, but I expect it'll be summer or fall as well. Some of the homeowners are asking about that, but that's still pending. On that project, the other thing to keep in mind, once that's all done, we would work with the town, of course, for Hyden and Eric, there may be some stuff with Zach as well, you know, they're gonna have, those are gonna be different type of connections, so they're, we'll try to develop a process and some standards, so they're putting the grinders in right, the right type of grinder, and they know what they're supposed to be doing, because it's a very unique situation. The other item on that, as we get farther along, Dan and I are looking into, is if you recall, there were some interests to take that Forest Main farther south, and you have the capacity to do that, so at some point, what we'll do is get that information from the town, so you can make a decision in terms of, do you want to do that or not, and how much those funds would be, and where those funds may or may not come from within the project. If you remember, in the construction project, we do have some allowances. So again, we'll try to get that in front of everybody, so that can be discussed. The sewer lining, I know Dan and the staff had a meeting with Eric and Ryan, Ryan, in terms of the, the pre-con. They've got a lot of the mittles. Looks like they're scheduled, they're, they're gonna work after the garage sales, and the plan is to have that done by the fair, because they're not gonna have a lot of tearing up, but they're gonna have various manholes and stuff, they're gonna be, there's gonna be traffic control. Can you get with your engineer not have all these projects go on once? Come on, this is bald guy, that's good. Well, we're, yeah. So, so the first thing they'll do on those is they'll, they'll jet those out, they'll video them, and then we'll look at them, make some recommendations, and, you know, some of those will be pretty black and white, if there's some that we need a judge and a call, we'll reach out to Ryan and Eric on those, of course. And then on the list stations, that's underground contractors as well, no update on that, but again, I suspect it'll probably be this spring or fall, or this summer or fall.
Excuse me, on all these ARPA projects, there will not, they will be either completed before the fair or not started until after the fair.
Or, or, or they will be, we haven't told anybody they can't start before the fair, but we want to make sure any of their traffic control is not disturbing the fair, because there, there's not really road construction.
Right.
That's what, that was our thinking, like all the stuff out on Page Road is gonna be off the road.
Yeah, off the road, yeah.
You know, the Forest Main out on Page Road, of course, it's gonna be out of town, it's gonna be in the road. So our thinking was, is that, you know, maybe they can't work the last Wednesday or Thursday or Friday of the fair or something, most of the day, but we, as much of the traffic control as minimized as possible, is that, is that okay, is that a fair assumption?
Yeah, I'd say it was okay. Because there's really no, it's not road work, it's off the road, so, yeah.
The only thing that may be affected would be Main Street or.
Right.
I'd be the only one that would affect anything, would be Main Street or the lining.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're not coming in for the fair, they're, so that weekend they'd be, maybe parked somewhere, not, you know, bothering anybody.
I, I still got on the list the Nisco property, I don't think that's kind of the ideal, although we haven't heard from them, so I think the law's in there for it to, to push that in a little back on.
Yeah.
On the community crossing project, Illinois Street and West, I know the majority of the west is done, I know you guys did a quick walkthrough.
It's gone.
Yeah.
The largest majority of that side, I mean, I took photos of all of it, it's pulled back four, six, eight inches. It's curled and brown, like wet cardboard.
It went, it went almost a week and a half, almost two weeks not being watered.
Until this week, after it already been three days of warm weather.
Yeah, and I've had a few of the people, like Ed there on the corner and other people telling me, is the town gonna help at all with this watering? Because in order to try to save a lot of that, these guys were out there running their own sprinklers, when they started seeing everything dying around them.
I'm fairly agreeing that they were, they were supposed to water those, I think the issue is they waited too long.
Yeah.
So it's nice, but it's a little bit less, it's more sensitive.
It's soaked as soon as it goes down.
It's, it's, especially down there on the south end.
On, on that, and again, it's really too late now, maybe it's a case-by-case scenario, but we have, we, I had a discussion with another community that does a lot of community crossing projects, and they are actually considering an ordinance that, you know, during construction, if you're a property owner on that road, there would be like, at one, there was an ordinance where they could either get a water, but they would get a little bit of a grace to do the watering. The contractors are supposed to do it, but naturally, the property owner, you know, but either way, there's room in the ordinance to do that. Yeah, so I guess they're watering, trying to salvage, we're gonna have to make a judge and a call here as we get into the summer, because it's gonna get worse.
I'm just concerned, honestly, even before the fair, walking up and down West Street, there's places in there where, I don't know if you look at some of the photos I sent, it's up six inches, and there's gaps this wide, other areas where it comes together, it's all open. You can't safely walk in that grass right now.
Okay, well, we'll just have to look at it.
We'll walk and look at it.
And then, of course, they're working on Illinois Street now, making progress. And then on First Street, of course, that's the other project going this year, we relayed to them to, you know, of course, stay west of, West Street in terms of the pending fairs this summer. And then, you know, basically, you know, anything they start, they're gonna have done before the fair. But more likely, that section, this section here, east of West Street, will probably be done after the fair, just to be safe. The other thing I may mention, and again, I know you've got plenty of projects going on, but just so you know that we're following this, the July, I think you mentioned this, the Ja- N dot cancel, the July applications for community crossings, of course. They hadn't formally said there's gonna be one this fall, but there's rumors that they're gonna, the, the, the towns and municipalities are pushing for that. And then, of course, next year, it's gonna be very, it's gonna be a lot more competitive. The funds are a lot less, and a lot more money's gonna be in Indianapolis, a lot more. So it's gonna be very competitive to get to money. Nothing on the annexation and planning, plan reviews, the revised brand, or the, if you go to the last page, apologize, some of this is, is our fault, some of the back and forth here, but we did update the document in terms of the size of the easement at the various locations, the thirty, the five along the Crossley line, and then that little ten-foot bump where their road comes to the north. Zach, do you have anything else to update on that?
No, I mean, is that, is that bump out right?
I think so.
Yeah, the easement, the access easement has previously been approved, so if that's accurate, what we would do is, we would have this signed, and we'd get it to Grayville Cattle and Properties to sign, and once we get this back, we can get it recorded.
Perfect.
Okay, Claude, you wanna, this is the same, it was dated from the last meeting, so I, I changed to June fourth, but this is where, you know, are you a notary?
Yes.
I'll have to get my stamp afterwards.
The, the only other item that I have, I think the town had pulled it up, but I think the town got another letter from Fort Wayne City Utilities.
We got one from IDN on living copper.
Okay, oh, that, I got that on my list, but also, did the town get a letter from City Utilities? Because they sent me a copy of it, I think it was yesterday, about the meter being down.
That was the one that I gave you from Tom Mann, a couple days ago, yeah.
Oh.
Okay, yeah, so we got the VFDs, when I say we, the town has got the VFDs replaced, but the meter, the wait for the meter to be replaced. And then, I think when the meter comes in, we gotta coordinate how we're gonna get that wired, so that it's separated. So Fort Wayne's pushing, part and part on that, to make sure that's done.
I just sent him an update on what meter readings on.
No, Zach, you guys are doing, it's not my fault, anybody, I'm just letting you guys know that.
I reached out to town.
Fort Wayne's pushing me, they're pushing you guys on this, so we're trying to.
It's already been ordered for like two or three weeks now, so it's like Fort Wayne reached out.
And then Ryan's asked, I gotta get you the letter about.
Did you write that letter?
I thought I, I got it, and I thought you guys had already signed it.
Well, we have to, we have to do another one anyway.
Okay.
So I still wanna rewrite a whole other letter, but it's basically gonna say the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Zach? So I, I reached out one more time to the O.C.R. of West Council to request information or their proposed agreement, and I did not get a response. I think we might take this off, we know that they reached out to us, we reached back out twice, no response. I provided you, we did ask a few comments in the transition letter, to the extent that goes out, you have that in your hand now?
Yeah.
Thank you. That's it for now, I was trying to do.
Okay.
Were you jumping, jumping a little bit, yes?
Okay. So as you know, the Allen County Economic Development Staff is the administrator for your property tax abatement program. So as a part of that, we also do the compliance end as well. So this is our annual compliance that we are required to do, so that is under state law. So all companies with existing approved designations that file for an deduction are required to file the compliance with Statement of Benefits forms. So those forms, once they're submitted, I then take a look at what was promised on their Statement of Benefits forms that was originally approved to what the compliance form states. So per your policy, just a little bit of a review on that, I look at jobs first, and those would be either jobs created or retained, and that seventy-five percent is what the company needs to meet. If they don't meet that, then I look at salaries, again, seventy-five percent. If they don't meet in either of those categories, then I have the opportunity to look at their investment for either real or the personal property. So that is what the resolution for your consideration is about. This evening, just finding that the two, well, it's the same company, but two different approvals were found to be in substantial compliance. So I did want to give just a little bit of an update, just because I think it's important to know where these companies are at, and just to report that out to you. So for Souter Feeds, they have a, their first designation was back in twenty sixteen, and then, as you remember, they had the fire, and so they asked for an extension on that, so that was amended under twenty nineteen, or in the year twenty nineteen, under one three three one dash two zero one nine. They were granted a seven-year abatement on real property and a ten-year abatement on personal property. So as of twenty-four, pay twenty-five, they have one year left on their real property, and then they have three years left on their personal property. They do, they were to create two jobs with payroll of a hundred thousand, and that has been met. They have created four jobs with salaries at seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and they were to retain thirty-two positions. They have twenty-seven of those positions, and their salaries are at one point six million. So that was that first one, and so based on the policy, they are compliant. And then the second one that we have was done in twenty twenty-three, and that was under Resolution one three seven one dash two zero two three. They were granted a seven-year abatement just on personal property only. They were to create one job, and they have created seven, so they went way above what they were required to do. They were to retain the thirty-four, and they have thirty, so they reported out here one point five million in salaries. So they have six years remaining on this abatement, and so they also are compliant as well. So if I can answer any other questions, I'd be happy to do so. Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, that's great, yeah.
Definitely access the Grayville, sure. Definitely accept the Grable, sure.
Is there a resolution number for that?
Twenty twenty-five dash three.
Do I have a motion to?
Need to read my title or no? I'll make a motion that we accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash three, Grable Town Council Resolution approving the twenty twenty-five pay, twenty twenty-six real and personal property compliance with statements of benefits, the CF one forms. Have a motion to accept the first reading.
I'll make a motion to accept the first reading of order number twenty twenty-five three. First reading.
All in favor?
Yep.
Aye. You need to do a second, third?
Yeah, do, I'd do a second for discussion and then. If we're gonna do it all in one meeting.
Okay, I make a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash three, Grable Town Council Resolution approving the twenty twenty-five pay, twenty twenty-six real and property compliance with statement of benefit forms CF dash one, which is now open for public discussion, if there is any. If not, then I make a motion to accept the second reading.
I'll make a motion to accept the second reading, order is number twenty twenty-five three.
All right, pending no further, we have to go for a third and final. Make a motion, we accept the third and final reading of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash three, Grable Town Council Resolution approving the twenty twenty-five pay twenty twenty-six real and personal property compliance with statements of written or a statement of benefit forms CF dash one. Do I have a motion to accept the third and final reading?
I make a motion, third and final reading of order is number twenty twenty-five dash three.
All in favor?
Agreed.
Go ahead.
Carry.
Do you want to get a copy of it?
I can.
Or do you want me to scan it to you?
Yeah, that's good. Thank you very much.
Right, we gear up next.
Um, I'm really here tonight for the cross connection ordinance.
Yeah.
And then I need, that's the response to I D M for the little minor things we had going on there.
That?
Yeah. Most of that is the well abandonment records, um, and a lot of, uh, response, I think it was, uh, attached, your attachment was all on there. I'm waiting on talking to Jason from Fort Wayne on the issue with our low total chlorine when, during the warm weather. State requires to carry a point zero five in the system. Point, yeah, point, sorry, point, zero point five, uh, in the system and, um, during the summertime, we, we don't carry that, I mean, we're sometimes just below point one. But we spoke with them last time on this issue, they said there's a little rule somewhere in there that as long as we take our back, we're taking our back T samples, as long as we get to count.
Plankton.
Plankton counts that the state will let that pass through. The inspector didn't know anything about it, so, and I tried to find that rule and I couldn't find it anywhere either. But Jason and Andrew did send me snippets of what had a conversation with that rule in there, but I couldn't read the whole thing. It was just a, like a picture screenshot of their phone. Um, so I'm gonna call Jason tomorrow and talk to him, so I can verbally understand better how to explain that to the inspector too, so.
Jason is with City Utilities?
City Utilities, yeah, yeah, yeah. He had the water plant there, so, they're the ones we sat in a meeting down there and they talked about all that stuff with us. Cause we brought that issue up originally of it being low during the, during the hot weather.
Andrew Shipper was.
He's in that conversation too, yes, yep, yep, he's in that conversation too. He, he told me to get ahold of Jason, he knew more about how to explain it. He's, yeah, Andrew's in my book kinda knows a little bit, but not, not full, full thing, so. So that's the way I'll wait, wait for explanation for that and that response, then, then we'll be ready to sign it, send that, send that out. That's the only thing I really didn't know how to answer on there, just didn't know how to articulate it properly, so. Soon as that's done, we'll get that going and wait for K C L, we'll get the living copper thing, let her send out too, and we should be good, so. And the cross connection's the other thing that was in there, so, and we're gonna be doing some of that tonight, so.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna talk about briefly, but if you wanna explain why we're, uh, doing this ordinance, um, that would be helpful too, but before you is, is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash four, this is for, we're gonna do two, this, uh, we have two meetings, cause it's an ordinance. So we'll just introduce it at the seed meeting, it's ordinance twenty twenty-five dash four, it's an ordinance of the Town Council of Town of Grable to provide a program for protecting the public water system from contamination due to backflow of contaminants throughout the water service connection into the public water system. This ordinance is the preferred form of ordinance that I D, uh, that I D M prepares and makes available to the towns, but this was requested it, it be adopted by, I D M requested that the town adopt this.
Yeah, our current ordinance is like two little sentences.
Okay.
So, yeah, we really didn't have anything, this gives us a little bit more teeth, um, you guys have fifteen of them or roughly?
Seventeen.
Yeah, somewhere near fifteen or seventeen of them that on a little bit larger facilities and the back flows, check valves are on there, so their system doesn't come back into ours, so they add paints and chemicals and stuff. We don't want them to contaminate our system, so that, that's what this ordinance is basically stating, loss of pressure or something that caused, but we lose pressure, they don't backfeed us, so.
Provide you inspection rights also, the ability, you know, let me find if they are backflowing improperly, or backflowing.
Yeah, yeah, if their backflow is bad and they don't have it checked, they gotta be checked annually, uh, inspected annually and tested and if they don't have it done, we can basically, gives us the right to go in there. Right now we don't have any right to go in there, this gives us a little more teeth, so.
Everybody's still working with me, you know, they're supposed to, we have a couple that need to get a couple fixed, but other than that, we're still working with me and doing it the right way, so.
So what we need to do is just, this is just for introduction and then the next meeting will be for second reading and discussion adoption. Okay?
So I would make a motion, we accept the first introduction reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash four, the ordinance of the Town Council of Town of Grable, Indiana, to provide a program for protecting the public water system from contamination due to backflow and contaminants through the water service connection into the public water system. Do I get a motion to accept the first introduction?
I may have a motion to accept the first reading of the ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash four.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carry.
I'm gonna have that for the second and third reading next, at our next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Stephanie, can I get, I don't know how quick the minutes are done, can I get a copy of the tonight's minutes as soon as you have them?
Yeah.
I'm gonna add it back to that, we are working on the process.
Do they, do they want to see it, execute a, they can suspend the rules and agree to adopt it at one meeting?
No, I, I, I'll just state in my letter that it's going through the meeting and it goes going through the process and then it's done.
Maybe you can include a draft of it.
Correct, yeah, I, yeah, it's in that, it's in that package there too.
Okay.
I'm gonna include the draft, say it's being done.
Okay.
Just, just so I can say, yep, we introduced it.
It was introduced.
Yep, next one we pass, so.
Eric.
Um, just want you, you, kind of be aware of your repairs that are gonna be coming up here. Um, over the winter time, where the Indiana, Indiana sign is there in front of the hardware store, that water box blew apart over the winter, so we're gonna have to cut a square out of the middle there and go down there and repair it. And then we got, uh, Southern Feeds, we got a big giant sinkhole out there. So I think there's a storm drain that runs underneath there from the field on the other side that might have collapsed and just, I mean, it's, it's massive. So I'm gonna have to get Adam over there to dig it up and figure out what's going on over there.
Where's that at?
Right in front of Southern Feeds. Giant sinkhole, so.
Is, is, is that where the new sewer lane's gonna be kinda going through too?
It's right in front of it. It's right in front of where it starts.
Is it a county tile?
No, it'd be ours now.
There, there, if you go on the other side of their driveway, that field right there, there is a storm catch basin right in that little ditch right there. I think it goes underneath all the, uh, culverts and stuff and goes towards the crane. And I just think it's about to collapse.
Jerry's mentioned that to me.
So I'm gonna have to look at it and it's, it's pretty big, so I'm, I wanna get it addressed.
I think that that sink was about all the time. Quite a while ago, yeah. And then I think.
I think it was.
Probably from a tile, at that time, I think, so it's probably another tile or some sort of.
And, uh, in the process of the rain we had last time, I found a broken tile over on the corner of the North Side, North Park. All that water that's on that corner, it was literally just blowing out of the ground like a spring, so I took my shovel and started digging it up and there's, there's a tile where somebody has been broken, it's draining the park somewhere. That's why that corner stays wet all the time, plus the leaks from the trailer park, so. I'm working with the trailer park to get the leaks fixed and trying to get that fixed too, so. So they'll dry up that corner and park.
You work with Nick on that, Nick Krieger and, uh, what's his name?
Two guys named Dan.
There's two guys named, oh, I was gonna say from the boys league back there.
No, I did have a meeting with the trailer park and Chris Piano and those guys and, um, they're trying to address it. And they're supposed to be getting quotes from guys that do the ball dining and stuff, and then once they get their quotes, I'm gonna give it to my guy and see what, cause Chris is like, don't know what the money's gonna be like, so. I'm gonna say get your guys to quote it, just, I wanna compare apples to apples, so whatever they quote, I want my guy to come in and be able to quote it and his guy's just scared he's gonna get his equipment stuck back there and.
He'd been afraid for three years.
Yeah, I mean scared, he'll go back there and do it if he did, if he gets a job, he might do it.
Let me know on that, where that's at, so it doesn't stall out, cause I deal directly with.
No, it's in, it's in Chris's hands right now, so I, he's gotta finish his part to come through and park it.
Thanks for letting me know, cause I'll talk with one of the other guys tomorrow.
Yep. That's all I got.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Is there any comments from public?
Um, those situations or anything?
Anything.
Anything?
Do I need to be in sight of a camera to talk or?
Yeah.
So I'm on Illinois Street.
You did, uh.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. No, I can, I can stand or stand, doesn't matter, sorry.
And, uh, address?
One three five three one, Illinois Street, my name's Lance Carey. And it was my understanding that anybody had extended that street was giving a, a to be able to continue to use their gravel. Well, I've got the six inch straight curb all the way across mine and all my neighbors have rolled or slider curbs going in. Um, Eric's assured me that I don't need to be here and that they'll take care of it, but they said they were gonna talk to you guys, so I just kinda wanna get your opinion on that or before they get too far into that project or the sidewalks and all that stuff, and but, it sounds like a section that would possibly be, or would be removed if it's to be fixed or made right, so.
Casey, how would that work with the sidewalk being right there?
I'm, I'm not familiar with the area, I know there.
I met with Todd tonight about all of that, um.
So is this one by the sidewalks or is this one not?
It's one by the sidewalks. The only issue we run into is access back and forth across the sidewalk. Uh, your particular property, we would still ask that you try to go across.
We would not park on the sidewalk.
I know, I'm just saying you're driving, but we have to, we have to acknowledge it, like we have everybody on the project.
Yes.
Parking on there, obstruction, we have an officer right here with the new sidewalks and trails. If people are on there or if something should happen, their sidewalk gets cracked up from people driving across it.
Yes.
It becomes a liability issue and responsibility issue, but, um, I just briefly mentioned it earlier today. It's up to the rest of these guys, I think since we've allowed it on one side, we, we need to make it available on the other side as well.
I, I appreciate that.
My, my question to Casey is how would you transition that with a sidewalk? And just, I guess you just like bring it down and?
I'm personally okay with even just like the traditional, like, um, what you got on some of those where it's that rolled style, even like a, like an additioner and it like, it doesn't have to be as low as what they have, but we've had that for, gosh, it's been there long before I bought the house and we have a lot of family and, you know.
I think the sidewalk would just go out and stop like regular sidewalk, wouldn't it?
Is that a curb face walk there or is it?
The sidewalk itself comes out and.
There's no, no green, it's a curb sidewalk.
And this is an area where we would have the smaller depressed curb, so they could park on the backside of the sidewalk?
I believe they were supposed to be, but they put full curb on it.
Well, there was one area that they missed, right? Cause that's what you talked to Todd about today.
That was another area.
That's a different area.
That's one that was just poured all together wrong because, that was our first meeting.
Okay. So what we're talking about is people that had stone parking before to make sure they have a depressed curb so they can park there now.
Yeah.
And if they're parked, do, do we have, I apologize here, we have walk on both sides?
No.
No, it's just.
The other two are on the same.
On the other side, it's not an issue, the issue we're talking about, of course, is we got a five foot walk that they're gonna be driving over and parking on the backside of it, which one option, which you've already mentioned, is keeping the walk free so people can still use it, the other issue is people, you're driving over it, so, you know, what I may talk to Todd about, we may wanna make those walks bigger.
We talked about that going from four to six inches.
Okay. He's smarter than me, so he, he was already on top of that.
This was a pickup truck tailgate discussion we had, so it's nothing.
Did you have a cooler involved too?
We did, there it'd have been eight inches. With curb face and everything, but, no, it's just something we talked about, the council, it hasn't even really been introduced to the whole thing yet, so. I don't know how that.
So is Todd, Todd's where?
Yeah, he met me out there.
And I think he, he thought, after I talked to him, he said he thought that we could get that implemented. The question is, does that mean we got curb we gotta tear out?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Council's okay with it, we can, we can implement it.
There's a couple of spots where it could cut out perfectly and just.
I don't know about it, yeah.
I really appreciate that, thank you guys for listening to me on that.
I'm glad you came, you know, I mean, just.
Appreciate it. Yeah.
It's better if you show up.
Yeah. Have a full understanding. Yeah, no, I just, you know, it's been, it's been very nice to have that there in that property, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right, so thank you.
It's a lot of work.
And, and it is, I've got a huge family and we cook out and we fill it up, so, but it keeps the road clear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you guys.
Yep, have a good one.
Thank you.
You too.
Question about parking and so on, um, easements on Indiana Street. Wanting to go park along the e, drive over people's land and park in an easement, what, what do you, um?
There's road right away, but what do you, I don't like.
This is, the easement would be where the telephone poles and the drainage lines are in brown. They're just pulling off the side of the road? No, they're going, driving across property, easement property to park their cars behind their house. Their house is on Illinois Street, they can't get to it, so they're driving down.
You're saying temporarily, they're doing it, just during construction?
Yeah, but it's upsetting people with.
It's really people's property.
Because one, it's tearing up their, their lawns and everything back behind there and.
It's utilities, but not any right of anything.
Well, but it's still, the property's owned by someone, it's not, the easement just allows, it's private property.
Right, yeah. Easement just means that we, public easement too, it's not necessarily.
So there's, along Illinois Street, some of the property owners are using existing easements. It could be utility easement, storm drainage easement, but they're using it for temporary access to park and get to their houses.
And it's not even their property that they're driving across, it's somebody else's property.
Oh.
Yeah, that, that can't do that and, because even though it's an easement, that property's owned by someone, it's subject to an easement, but it's.
And they're responsible for the upkeep.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's what I interpreted it, and so when people come to me and ask me about it, I said.
How many, is there, is there a lot of these or a handful or?
I know Lance was saying there's at least probably four or five people that were driving, driving behind those houses there, so. Because they, they were having issues gaining access to their driveways, so. Because they, they were having issues gaining access to their driveways, so they tried to divert that by using the utility easement.
Driving across to other people's property. Well, re, just remember, it, it doesn't matter that it's a utility easement, there, there happens, if that's an easement area, but that land is owned by someone, so they're going across someone else's property. They may, they may be going on.
They can't do that.
Yeah.
It's not allowing.
No.
Right. Some people were understanding that after we had our meeting with them, that that was okay to do that.
Nobody showed up for that meeting, it's your call.
So I'm wondering if, um. Back along there where people are trying to use that, if we should put up.
Get some signs up and.
And the entrance, if there's a main entrance where people are going in and out.
I'll go tomorrow and I'll make sure, uh, folks throw some.
Barricades or something.
We'll pull some road blockers over here and put it on these sides, so we can't get through it.
We have any more pylons, the bigger, rounder pylons?
What they do in this, man?
Where, well, you know where Steve Herman's house is?
Yeah.
Well, they, they eat, there's an easement that runs between.
Their wide open spot.
Katie's.
Yeah.
And so they're driving across Mrs. Her, Karen Herman's land to get back behind their house. Okay.
Good.
Peters, get down here. Okay. Thank you for taking care of it, appreciate it.
That's true.
Okay. Alright. Clerk of Treasure.
Not her again. I know I had mentioned at either the last meeting or the meeting before, that, um, I suggested we get a purchasing policy in place allowing. The contracted maintenance to charge on charge accounts as well as if we're wanting to authorize Parks Department to make purchases on the town's behalf, um. Anyone that's not the governing body and or what was put into an ordinance back in nineteen ninety-six. Um, making me the designated purchasing agent for the town. In front of you, I, in that, um, listserv lists that I have with other clerk treasurers, we've kind of been bouncing around, giving other. Each other ideas of existing purchasing policies other communities have. And this one is from the town of Yulin, um, just as an example, and I, I made Zach a copy as well, um, just to. At least give us a, a baseline of what, um. I, I think we should tentatively have in place. To allow those parties to make purchases on the town's behalf. Like I said before, the. The only purchasing agents that we have are myself. And you three, technically speaking, outside of a council meeting. So. If anyone out of the Parks Department makes purchases that aren't, um, authorized at a council meeting or listed as a purchasing agent, she's. He or she is not authorized to make those purchases, same as our contracted maintenance, which. That, that would apply to like the hardware charge accounts, Menards charge accounts, um. Fuel, the fuel card, anything like that, so this just protects everybody along encompasses that, so.
So I am a purchasing agent?
Technically speaking, outside of a council meeting, within a, within a certain dollar amount, if I, if I remember reading the, the IC code correctly.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, those are high dollar amounts that require.
Sure.
But are you saying that if someone needs to get something from like one of these guys or the parks or something? They have to come in here and get it pre-approved before they go get it?
Technic.
Or you designate them as an au, you designate individuals as authorized purchasing agents.
Okay.
You can expand the list however you want.
Right now, as of right now, it's, that purchasing agent is me. So any, any purchases or authorization for purchases is technically supposed to be presented either to me or to one of you.
You guys can put us on the list.
Yeah, I don't want some.
You guys put our names on the list, yeah.
Someone's gonna be going back and forth, back and forth all the time, trying to get this up or this up.
Joyce on the list, um. There's a, um, Clayton's on the list and Mike at the hardware store, other than that, that's about it. Unless you have Menards and I believe Stepping's on the list and Ryan, I believe, a couple of you guys are.
I don't think Ryan's on it.
I don't.
I know Wilmer, Claude, Jeff, myself, Joyce. And you are on it.
That makes sense, that's, that's always been on the list.
But this way, we actually have something written in stone saying that those people can make purchases on our account, cause I mean that.
And I think we always had up to. More than five hundred dollars.
Yeah, there was a limit of five hundred dollars.
What was that?
This says, if the purchasing agent expects any single purchase to exceed five hundred dollars, then they need to obtain approval from the town council for the expenditure.
Yeah, that should be that.
So the park doesn't have an account under their own name for their own budget for like when they purchase stuff?
They, they, they have a separate section for like the hardware, but that all gets appropriated out of the park's money.
Yeah.
There's like five different accounts in the hardware store, so anything that's spent from the park is put in the park department, anything from the water is put in the water.
But. What I, what I'm, what I'm more or less trying to say is that. Anyone from the Parks Department going in and making those purchases isn't an authorized purchasing agent to make those purchases without prior authorization from.
Well, it should just be the park board president.
Yeah, unless we make them.
President.
Unless that, you know, and that can be written up legally, you know, in the case of someone being ill or.
Yeah, you wouldn't be a name, you could name the park board, then serving park board president.
Yeah.
Yeah. I believe she's the one who makes purchases for the parks anyway, I don't wanna go through her.
Uh, it shouldn't only be her anyway.
Yeah.
And, uh.
You just wanna put an ordinance together that stipulates that they just need, it does need them, right? There's nothing on the paperwork right now.
There, there is nothing in place other than ordinance three seventy-eight that says that I'm the authorized purchasing agent.
Or old minutes where you guys are authorized stuff.
Yeah.
Maybe it'll only be where you.
We could review this, I mean, I don't know anything about the background, I don't know if it's compliance code or SBO or, uh, state work accounts, but we could look at this, if this is the form you guys can utilize.
This looks pretty moving.
Yeah, it makes me nervous when I see twenty pages or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah. It seems like it'd be real easy to get caught up in something. I think we need to dumb it down a bit, hit the basics that we need, protects everybody.
I, I made copies of the, the existing ordinance, I don't know if we just wanna add, add on to that one or, um.
What is it?
Nineteen ninety-eight.
You, you know what, you guys know what that, what is this, nineteen ninety-eight?
They're, they're, they're.
It's where I started.
Two-page.
I feel like I got my stuff.
The third page.
I thought you had a switch that they had outside staff on here.
I've got one.
He's got the page in signing.
So give this one to Claude. That one's. Give that one to Will. Give that one to Wilmer.
Do you have one?
I'm sure, I'm sure it's outdated and it needs revisited anyways. Um.
That's where I started.
Two of three, two of three, is there a three of three?
It, it's literally blank.
Alright. We will look at this and review it for next. For our next meeting.
Okay.
So, do you have any comments along the ways, Zach?
No, I'll take a look at it as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, secondly, I was approached by the Chamber of Commerce, um. To ask for permission for street closures for the upcoming Old Husker Tractor Show as well as the Pets on Main Parade. It was given a written, um, formal request of those road closures from H. Souter and Sons, um, General Store. Asking for the street closure. On Main Street from State Street to Second Street from eight AM to three PM on Saturday, June fourteenth, for the tractor show. And the closure of Main Street from State Street to First Street from eight AM to twelve PM on Saturday, June twenty-first, for the Pets on Main Parade.
Any other second? Motion?
I'm making a motion, we, um, let them go ahead and close the streets as requested.
Second.
Do we close them or do maybe the signs should be closed? Last year they used the signs that were down there, while the road were, are they gonna need signs for road closure?
Nope, they, uh, Jim called me and I ordered new cones for them, so.
Yeah, I think they just put up cones.
Okay, okay, yeah, I know they used the signs.
They usually keep somebody right there. You know.
Yeah, Jim called me about a month ago, wanted cones and I was like, all my cones are out on site somewhere and destroyed, so I just ordered ten brand new ones. They're still in a box, I'm gonna give them to them for, to have all the new stuff out there, so.
Paint that T O G on. Okay. Next.
Next. Um, this was brought up at the May twenty-first meeting, um, but it was advised. And per the ordinance that we get, um, additional bids in for the new AC unit for the town museum. Um, you already had the Merz quotes, but I included them again for you.
And I couldn't get my guy.
Um, but Eric had Keith come over and, um. Inspect the unit and he has quoted five thousand three hundred for the AC unit replacement. Merz had originally, or Merz quoted six thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars for the same replacement. That was presented at the twenty, on the twenty-first meeting.
What was the first one?
For the dollar amount?
Yeah.
Fifty-three hundred.
And he installed that originally?
I believe so, I believe so.
I think so.
He also did the gift shop too.
Yeah.
Or quote shop, not gift, why did you call, that was called, there's a quote shop.
It was called a gift shop, it's never what.
When I first started here, it was the gift shop, it wasn't the quote shop, so.
And that's what it was, Rizney four. He got Satan tracking all the way.
Any comments?
I make the motion, go ahead and let, uh, Keith do it. Second that.
Motion, Kerry. Fire truck insurance and ownership letter.
And I might wanna meet with you on this, um, I, I kind of drafted up, one, I, I needed to unbury the title for. The fire truck, which I ended up finding, the thing was.
You did find it?
Surprised it didn't fall apart.
It's offsite somewhere.
Yes.
Yes, I got the handrails too.
Okay, that's what, I was, I was trying to get ahold of Jeff Menche this afternoon and it went straight to voice, so.
Jeff, the fire chief sent it to me.
Um, but.
I'll, I'll look it up.
We'll need a, some type of formal letter written stating that this, that our town fire truck is stored offsite. Um, it's still going to be insured with the town?
The, the district fire department will keep the insurance on it until January of, uh, twenty-six. Then we, as the town has to furnish the insurance on it.
Okay.
Cause this, this fire truck. We got plans to build a little museum up at the park and that's where it'll go in there.
And so what does the insurance company need, they need a letter stating what?
I haven't reached out to them directly, but I'm assuming they're gonna need something saying that this, this is obviously a temporary placement of storage at X property.
Yeah.
Showing that the town of Grable is.
Can you email me a scanned copy of the title, so I can represent the letter, and Wilmer, you, you say you have the address?
I got the address for someplace, I'll have to look it up, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I know initially, Wilmer and I were gonna kind of collaborate and make a letter, but I think having something more, um.
Yeah, we need.
On the legal end, just because of, with it being such a sensitive, um.
And yet I think we need signatures of the council and of the fire chief. And then you need to attest. Because if we change. We, we need a letter, the note, the, the next board, whoever it is, knows what's going on, you know. You know, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I, I think we just need.
And the fire chief's the one that's storing it?
Yeah, well. They got taken out there and, uh, I hit the ceiling.
Not the fire chief.
It wasn't supposed to, it wasn't supposed to water until we okayed it. And they didn't know that and they took it out and, or he come and got it. I just wondered, when the, the fire chief and I went out and I made sure he understood that it's just parked there.
Yep.
It's coming back to Grable in that museum, you know. And so, that, but I, we need that letter to back this thing up.
Okay.
We need signatures on it.
What's the name of the individual that's storing it?
Jeff Menche.
Can you spell his last name?
Emmy.
S H E Y, I think.
Emmy, S H E Y?
It's the E Y.
That is Y.
I think it's S H E Y.
Yeah, I'll just need his address.
Then you lost the road, I'll, I'll get, I'll get that. I'm gonna ask about it, it might have been through my emails or something, I'm not sure.
Okay. I might be able to look it up as well.
Get that his house, you said, Wilmer?
I, I tried looking it up on GIS and because it, being such a massive compound, there's no, it's like there's no real address for Jeff Menche, it's everybody but.
Fourteen one twenty-two, off road. Yellow again, fourteen one twenty-two?
Fourteen one twenty-two.
That's what I, that's what it showed up.
It's in the heating building.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so it's living in the north, it's all the south, and he lives in the middle.
The brakes were all over, they didn't work. Took them all apart.
One twenty-four.
And I think we're down the road, we need.
One four, one two four.
Space or something, I don't know. You know, it's just, uh.
There's, there's a lot, there's a lot.
Stephanie, I think on there, we need to have a place for Jeff Menche to sign also.
He's in compliance with this.
Right, exactly, I think we need to, just, we're gonna have to back.
Like I said, it, it's, it's, it's a fragile, fragile situation that I don't want.
I'm not sure how soon it's gonna happen, that we do this, and so, yeah.
Gotta start a fundraising deal or something.
Yeah. Maybe we can get the.
I'll talk to you about a couple of items I have too.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't put this as a bullet point, um, but I wanted to let you all know, I, I did include it in all of your packets. Of the proposed timetable for the twenty twenty-six budget process. Yesterday, I submitted my pre-budget report to the gateway, um, and this is just an outline of. The dates ahead of us of when. the dates ahead of us of when the others will be presented in front of you, so you're not wondering when and where and all the things.
What's your anticipation of availability of funds?
I don't know at this time, Claude.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to, it, this also kind of gives you guys an opportunity to say, hey, I, I know last, at the tail end of last year, Wilmer wanted, what was it, Building Two paved, um, or concrete poured down in Building Two.
No, where'd that be?
Or, sorry, the pole barn.
Yeah, the pole barn.
Um, that, that, that's, this gives you guys an opportunity to say, hey, let's make sure that we allocate the funds for this, this upcoming budget, and.
Yeah, but we, we've got it, we gotta do something, you know?
Yeah.
And, and we're gonna ruin our equipment that sits on stones, and down here, too much moisture and stuff like that, so.
So if you guys wanna work on your list and figure out what, what you wanna allocate specifically for upcoming, um, projects or expenditures for this.
And, and I did get a quote to do that, so it'll give us an idea what kind of money we're looking at, you know? Which would have to get re-quoted then.
And I know, like, the, the paving for town hall, that, that's something that you guys have been kind of talking about and mulling over this year, that, that might be something to add into your list. But this way, it kind of gives you a rough draft of when all those, those ideas and expenditures should be submitted in, so I can get them factored into the budget, so.
Okay.
Other than that, um, I just have the accounts payable for the June fourth meeting and the gross payroll for June sixth.
What was all this stuff for True Land Equipment?
Did we like, did we like build a tractor or something?
We built a tractor.
We had a hood for the tractor, blew off.
Got a hood for the tractor, uh, got a seat for the tractor, had to get the bucket loaded because it split along the hole in the bucket. Sandbox on the back split open, I had to have that replaced by Mr. Miller. That's Mr. Miller's charges, he did a bunch of fabric repair on the bucket and sandbox.
Is that something that was just going bad, or?
Oh, it's been bad for a while, we had a windy day in Clayton, grabbed a tractor, flipped it off and smacked it in the face.
It's twenty, twenty.
Being maintained all the way.
It's twenty-five years old.
It's thirty-year-old plastic.
Is that?
Tractor, that one.
Yeah.
It was here before I got here.
Yeah.
And tractors really don't wear out, you just repair them.
Well, that one takes a salt and say, all the salt.
Yeah, I mean, it's salt, it's, it's different.
It still takes a lot of, too.
Good going down the road today.
Yeah, rode great.
Can look good going down the road today, but I do.
I'm looking to get my shit.
When, when the hood flies off, let's get it repaired.
Correct.
It's not, it don't, it's not worth a crap if you wanna sell it and you don't have a lot of.
Well, we, the, the bezel around the, the steering wheel is falling apart now, too, which is all plastic, all the stuff that I'm replacing is thirty-year-old plastic.
Well, just keep up maintenance on it, that's, that's what we, what we need. And, uh, the thing is, uh, there's a value to it when you trade them off. And, and, and there's no value.
Everything that, uh, we're basically cosmetic.
And, uh, so, you know, I just.
It's just all.
And then I, I talked to Ryan on a couple of things, and he took care of it, so, you know, that's, that's the issues, and safety's another thing. You know, we gotta maintain covers over all belts at the all time, I don't care how good the guy is. And, uh, they put them there for a reason. They went and put them on there for a reason, so.
Are there, are there safety lights on that?
On what?
Tractor?
Tractor?
Yeah, there's caution lights.
There's flashes on.
Just flashes on the back.
One of the pillars on the back.
There's triangle on, too.
Yeah, we gotta be, yeah, on the back, the seat, the big ones, triangle.
I can be warmer.
But they gotta turn on.
Yeah.
I can, I can be warmer, put those in there.
Yeah.
Sometimes you can turn them on.
Yeah.
So they gotta turn them off.
Yeah, pretty good then?
I got them washed.
You good, Wilmer?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Make the motion, we pay the current recorded bills as well as the gross payroll as presented. Second on that?
I'll second that.
Motion?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Keep laughing.
Jeff.
Come on, be serious.
So you guys did okay key for two of the air conditioner, right?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm good.
No. Anyone, one else last call? Do you need girls?